Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone follow up members please.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Trustee Chombley.
Yeah.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Here.
Trustee Chombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of December 12th special meeting.
So.
Have a second? This is a special meeting with the, uh, with the contract here. As well as the earth science in hearing. The discussion on this one. All those in paper signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period, numbers of the community. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in paper signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period, numbers of the community. No? Okay. We'll move on now. This is the part of the, part of this job that I kinda like. I'd like to congratulate all of you decorating contest winners. The village was very nicely lit, beautiful. Everyone did a great job. I'd like to thank Amy for judging. And, uh, I'm sure there were others that helped you.
There were.
Would you like to give them credit?
No.
Okay.
I had dragged my husband because my other two kinda fell by the way so.
Oh, okay, well, thanks Amy and Paul.
Yes.
Congratulations winners. Mr. Boucher. Is that my friend?
Yep.
First place award, best overall presentation. Make sure that she gets this. Karen Favreau, second place award. There we go. Cherry Street, right?
Yes.
So you could go to the back.
Congratulations. And third place award, best overall presentation, 2011. Mr. Favreau. Jackie Carroll. Wonderful display on Prespector. Thank you. You too, thanks.
May I be excused?
Yes, you may, sir, thank you.
I'm not allowed to.
You haven't been good tonight?
No, judges can't go to meetings. I'm sorry.
That's a good one. I wanna be a judge.
That's why the town board is lucky I never go down there. Thank you again, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I know it's Cherry Street.
How's it bad or look in here?
I don't know. Well, well. Into that.
It's been nothing for over a year so.
Cherry Street sign, we'll get one.
Do I bill it to you?
Uh, no, yes.
More?
I'll take care of it.
People come into work at my house, they're on Cherry Street. Yeah, you know, they're plugging through the GPS and then can't find it when they get up there.
Didn't notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get taken care of.
Alright. And our first place winner, Mr. Boucher.
Now, first place not only went to your beautiful presentation, but to your overall upkeep and improvement on the property.
Yes, very nice.
It's been phenomenal and a nice addition to the village.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess we'll let you get into important stuff now, right?
You're welcome to sit.
We're gonna go decorate the inside of our house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Report from Mike Tatro, codes enforcement, out here today. Somebody know? No? Okay. I'll get him tomorrow. Guess what my report? I'm very happy to say, the building formerly known as the Meat Locker in 93 Church Street is no longer a hazardous situation. The building unexpectedly collapsed on the 15th of December has been removed quickly from the site. In the spring, the topsoil grass heating will be applied to the site per the contract with the contractor. A bill will be generated and sent to the landowner in an attempt to secure payment to repay the village for its expenses. And then we will go from there. Fortunately, no one was hurt or injured by this experience and Mr. and Mrs. Castine will have their home repaired quickly. I would like to thank Mr. Kevin Triller for videotaping the whole event and sharing the video with the news media and giving the village a copy of the disc to keep as a record of village history. Thank you. A small reminder, there's no parking on village streets from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. until April 1st to allow for safe plowing and sanding. Haven't had a whole lot of snow this winter, but we can expect some. Thanks to the DPW crew for keeping our streets safe in a timely manner. Water and wastewater bills will ring out the first week of January and are to be paid on or before January 31st. We would appreciate your attention in taking care of this obligation as soon as possible. And I would like to wish all of our residents a happy and prosperous 2012. Okay, ask them. Trustee Chombley.
Um, really don't have anything to report this evening. I'm very happy that the building that church, on Church Street is down and, uh, came down a little quicker than we expected, but, um, thank God no one was hurt and, and the damage at Castine's, no one was injured there, so. And Greg, again, thank you for all the time that you dedicated to getting that taken care of.
Very fortunate to lose any injuries there. Thank you. Mr. Kuzenda.
Along with the mayor's report, I'd also like to extend thanks to everyone of us who helped with the Christmas tree lighting festival. It was a great turnout. Also, many congratulations to the people who won and participated in the decorating house lighting contest. That was excellent to see. Nicely lit up, everyone loves lights. Finally, just, uh, just another note to people with wood burning stoves or fireplacees. You may not have seen locally tragedies or bad accidental situations, but throughout the country, there has been some serious events that just need, people need to remind themselves, coals, embers, be careful of your fireplacees. And if you are, it is the heating season and if you are maintaining your heat on furnaces, it doesn't hurt to visually check and inspect your furnace occasionally, even though it may sound like it's running fine. It doesn't hurt to take a look.
Good notice, thank you. Trustee Chombley.
Good point, Tom, very good point. I know I don't have anything to report tonight, but again, congratulations to the winners of decorating contest. And thanks to the Garrett committee for, uh, for judging. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Garrett.
Alright, so the last one that gets to say thank you to everybody for the houses. They were great, it was very hard, we actually had to go around the village, uh, like four or five times and go back to the houses and we changed places and, um, adjusted winners. But we kinda went simple this year, a little different as for our winners, um, which was kinda nice. The presentations were wonderful. Uh, there is going to be a boys and girls basketball tournament again at St. Mary's, uh, the 17th and the 19th. And we are still looking for some boys and girls teams, fifth and sixth grade, so anyone interested, please give me a call at 298-2829, um, keeping these events going. Also, to kick off Catholic Schools Week for us, the 11th, Sunday, the 11th, there is going to be a Pass a Dish Dinner open, um, Saturday, right after Mass. Anyone who wants to come is to bring a, uh, dish and we'll have a movie in the gym for kids, so it'll be like another community night. Uh, but we're throwing in a little bit of food, if you bring food, you can eat. So at Pass Edition, have a community dinner in the cafeteria on February 9th, Saturday the night. No, the 11th.
February 11th.
February 11th.
And the basketball tournament is in January or February?
February. Oh, the dinner is, is February 11th, did I say January?
He didn't.
Oh, February.
He didn't really say.
Sorry. It's Catholic Schools Week that week and we're kicking off with Sunday with opening up like a community thing in the gym. Uh, that'll be at 6:30. Alright, so we'll be playing in the gym for the kids, a little something to do.
Everybody you need to bring, bring a dish to pass, double dish.
Bring a dish to pass. Yep. I haven't chosen the movie yet. It'll be good. Promise. It has to be good, being shown in Catholic school. And that is it. I do have questions when we come to other things, but, um, that's it for my report, thank you.
Thank you. Have a report from Detective Trezor, please.
Um, everyone has their December revenue and expense report. And we also did a water and sewer billing. Our water bills were $52,697.77 and sewer billing was $87,619.23.
How are you coming on the back? I know we had a bunch of backups on the sewer and water that people hadn't been paying, we were waiting on people to bet.
Well, but they were, there wasn't that many, they were just put on elsewhere.
Some extra bills to address?
Um, they need to go on the board.
Yep. Any motion, any motion to pay the Shane Lane Peterville bill, $1,711.20. This is for repair on the 2,000 snow block. Any motion?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this bill? A little more intensive than we had planned to replace the oil van during the inspection. Tire rides were, uh, had to replace the tire rides. Had to pass inspection. Any other discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Do we have to do these all individually? No, you can't do a bunch of some?
Want to put them all together?
Yeah, I mean, it's okay, go through each one individually, so we know where we're at again, that's great.
Alright, the fascinol, 45 gallon manual closed cabinet to store.
No, no. You don't, there's a purchase order, that's separate. You have purchase, right. No, is she in front of you on the other desk?
This one? Alright. Ah, we're straight.
That's everything listed.
The bill is included on that.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have a dig safely, where was that, the dig safely cost?
That's when you call for a.
Callouts.
Callouts.
Alright. Kings, the power system is for generator repair. Nisek, Nisek, Nisek and, uh, Surglass Chemical Company. 794.
4.
4. Alright. Put a bunch of all together, need a motion.
So we need to take out the 1711 now though?
No. No, you, well, you, you already approved that one.
Right.
Well, we approved a lower amount, but.
Okay. We've already approved the 1711, so it'll be everything. Everything less than the 1711.20. Any motion to approve?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay. These are all taken care of, these individuals?
No, those are purchase requests.
Okay, so we gotta go through these. Alright. Purchase request by Amy Ash Clark, municipal equipment. Uh, this is for the sidewalk plow. We've had it for how long, five years?
Six years.
Six years. This is to repair and replace some parts on the sander on the back. Specialized equipment here.
Who's fixing it?
We will. We will fix it. The sum of. $2,115.41, is that correct?
Over 2 cents.
42 cents.
But there's also shipping charges, but it's not to exceed $200.
Alright. So we're talking 231542?
Correct, but it may not be $200, but.
So not to exceed.
Not, it said right on, but not exceed.
Okay, so.
So about $2,300, approximately $2,300.
So make a motion that we, uh, approve expenditures to repair this, not to exceed $2,300.
Okay. Have a second? Have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Chombley. Wait, question please.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Who's the second quote from, we have to have two for this dollar amount?
You can't have two for this dollar amount because this is a specialized company.
Okay.
And this is a $6,500 sander.
Okay. Tom, just asking. Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Fascinol, 45 gallon manual closed cabinet. This is stored in flammable materials. Here in the garage. And you think the price is significantly less than what was quoted first?
Yes, it was, uh, $1,089 and this is state cost. Free shipping.
Who was $1,083?
USA Blue Book.
Did you just have a copy attached to this?
Oh, I really don't have to because of state contract. You don't have to have a copy of the state contract.
Okay.
Any motion to approve?
So, I'll make a motion to approve purchasing cabinet. Found the cabinet at 77339.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
What do you put in here, sir?
It's for the gas canons and stuff that's in the garage.
Paint cans, flammable materials. Have a vote, please.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Planning purchase requisition, uh, this is for a gas monitor kit. Trying to update, update our safety equipment here. And the last one was a 1980.
8384.
Okay, so it's, uh, way out of, way out of time. We need this to do our confined space, open up a manhole, put the portal down in there. See what kind of, uh, levels are there before we send somebody into that, into that enclosed space.
I make a motion that we purchase the gas monitor kit for a price of $1,054.70.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
It says state contract too?
No. Not state contract, but there's another quote right behind, attached to that. Didn't have a state contract.
They all say Belon.
What's that?
They all say Belon.
Yeah, it's the same company. That, that's, this one, this one here is called the Prestige.
Is there any shipping and handling on that? He's just gonna drop it off, right?
Uh, um. That, that was included.
Okay.
Okay.
And this, this has, the, if you look at that, that other one, that I think is 17, $1,700. The other one. There's. The one that we have is outdated, this one here has, had to get the charging kit and everything with it. And you'll have to have it tested once a year. And it would've cost over $500 to have ours all recalibrated and done. And it's not up to date. This does everything.
Does this one require annual calibration?
Yes, but we have the tank of gas, we can do it.
Okay.
What's that?
What is the annual cost for keeping that up?
The tank, we get the tank, we calibrated ourselves.
Oh.
I don't know how much the tank is, but it's something that's mandated by the state itself.
Okay, so when we get this, you put a little thing on your calendar for next year?
Yeah, and they sent me one today, I got one in the mail today to use until we get our new one.
We're gonna use this equipment? We get safety equipment by now, so we don't use our safety equipment.
We have to.
I know.
We go on a manhole.
You guys, do they use it?
We, sometimes we don't go to manhole, but we go in a confined space, we have to have. It's either that or ultraviolection, which we would have.
No, I know we have to have it, no question about having it, but do you guys actually put it down the holes when you go down?
Well, you have to, but for the sewer jet, you don't have to. But if it's a confined space and they come and it's not on the shelf, it'll cost you more than that $1,000.
No, I understand that.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
We go right by the book here, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? Have a vote.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Motion to pay the warrant, please.
Same motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the warrant? Notice the balances were above where it should be at this point of the year.
Yeah, we're in nice shape.
No discussion? Have a roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Kuzenda.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Can I ask you a question on Nisek, you know, at home you get a choice of how to pick, how you want it. Do they give us the option here in the village?
I got the supplier.
Yeah, the supplier.
You must believe a couple different ones.
Are we, do we have the best choice here? Our electric is so outrageous. And what are our choices that we're choosing?
We had a presentation from another supplier, uh, was it a month ago or so?
Probably six weeks.
And a gentleman came in and gave us a presentation. It looks like a, it looks like a program that's worth investigating. Correct me if I'm wrong here. There's a percentage that comes back to us at the end of the year, at the end of the, you know, billing year.
Is it, is it a variable rate, Greg?
I think it was a variable rate.
Yeah, and there, there's a set rate, they'll, they're guaranteed. Minimum 1% less than.
You want, what I've learned, what I've learned, you wanna, you wanna stick with a variable rate. If you go with a fixed rate, you're, you're paying throughout the year when you should have a, a lull. Basically a variable, the only time it could hurt you is if you had a natural disaster like a hurricane that wiped out, had to lower refines. I had switched over from Nisek Solutions just to Nisek, my variable rate, you save a lot of money. I think, we need to, need to look at that.
Well, go through your.
Well, this other program, what is it called that you looked at?
It was two.
And.
And that, we've looked into that too, and they guarantee you 1% less.
The only, uh, the only drawback right now is, no, I mean, at least the highest $35 charge if you opt out of your account before, you know, before it's due. And the new year just started, so.
Right.
And how many accounts would we be looking at?
12, 13. 10 or 12, yeah.
For Nisek, we have that?
Mm-hmm. Well, every, every.
They're not Nisek. Most of our accounts are Nisek Solutions.
No, we have both, Nisek and Solution. But Solution is just supplier.
Alright.
Yep. Which is not Nisek though.
Right.
No. And that's the same with that Andit Energy. You've got Nisek, but then Andit be your supplier.
Oh, I had none of the results.
One of our biggest expenses.
I had good results at Nisek, almost two, switching just to Nisek.
And we'll look at it. Speaking of expenses, we have a group coming in next week?
Yes.
Next week to, uh, look at the blowers at the wastewater plant. If we decide that we wanna go that way, it should result in significant savings, that's our biggest, our biggest electricity user. And see what the, what the turbines are much more efficient. Tuesday.
Uh, he said the 16th. But he was gonna, he was gonna be back and let me know whenever the guy can get here. Right now, we're running four blowers down there.
We can replace them with two turbines.
Mm-hmm.
Save us a lot. Take them themselves, do the carriers. But we'll look in the. Your report, please.
My report. Uh, you all have a copy of it in front of ya. Right now, we're, we're gonna be picking up Christmas trees, we picked up quite a few as it was. And keeping the streets clean and the garage, uh, we got some company coming tomorrow here, so we'll lose some stuff in the garage and I'll leave it up to that.
Who's second?
Larry, this is number 11, the Nisek wires of the wastewater plant, was it repaired?
Uh, yes, that was last Saturday.
What happened?
The wire got loose on top of the transformer and it was, the second pump started, it's art, and it shut the system down. One pump wouldn't start, got clogged, so I clogged Nisek. They came on Saturday and I weeded down there for them, and they fixed it.
Uh, the trees, last year you had a later pickup date on the trees. Did you still get Christmas trees towards the?
As long as they're out there and they're clean, we'll pick them up till they're gone.
Okay.
But I have to set a date. But if they got tinsel on them or wire or anything, they'll stay.
Okay, well, I was just curious, 'cause you did have a later date and this year it's pretty early, from a back to back.
Yeah, there was a lot of them. When I went out and checked the roads Sunday morning, I just got three on Third Street, so. A lot of time they get this on TV anyways, it's gonna be a later date, so.
True. Alright, a question for you too. With all the extra time that you had to put in on this collapsed building, did we keep track of the overtime hours and all that to add on to the expense?
It was just that one, that was just that.
Well, you were on the road, the road was closed till what hour? Did your people go down the road?
Yeah, I only, I only had one guy, it was three hours, that was it.
Okay.
Unless you wanna pay me extra, I'll take it.
And then the other, the first Thanksgiving evening, it was Jimmy.
Yes. So it goes probably a total of five hours.
Okay. And, and is that it that's been additional to us, but it's also took away from all our other work, you know? So we stopped everything to be there at the site. I mean, should that not be charged to them?
One day, we can add it to the bill.
We really should do that.
As well as, uh, the engineering cost. Lawyers' fees if there is any, and the contractor's cost.
And everything with the Castines is covered through?
Contractor.
Contractor. Okay. Um, and one other question with that, and I know that, you know, I'm not beating a dead horse here, but I know we don't always use our safety equipment and that would've been a good date too, that you guys should've all had hard hats on, on that scene, we never know what happened. We never know what happened and, you know, I'm watching this video, I hear you screaming, "Get out, it's coming down, it's coming down."
That was immediate scream.
Oh, I thought it was you. Whomever, anyway, it's a dangerous situation and we have the equipment and we should really make sure employees are wearing it. Because i- if anything happens, it comes down on us, it comes against our insurance. Um, and I don't mind being hurt, more importantly than that. Um, I know they're cumbersome and they're a pain in the butt, but we really, when we're out there, we should have our hard hats on and, and be dressed for that. Just a little safety tip there.
Good point.
So, the money piece adding in all the cost that this guy, does he have, do we know, does he have any other assets in the United States? 'Cause I know, talking with Paul, it's very difficult to go after them in Canada.
Other than his poor business, you know, the heat packages stores, leaving parts for Air Force Base, but I don't know if there's anything we can do.
We should look into that.
See if it will affect his business.
Because there's a way that, yeah, there's gotta be something a little bit more effective than saying, you know, hail Mary, let's hope.
He does a lot of Florida and Bristol Beach business and packages tours of Montreal and Lakeville.
Okay.
Something to investigate him. Anything else? With the correspondence, please.
Oh, yeah, Larry, one more thing, ice skating rink. Is there any?
We need to get a grant.
I know we need a grant, but is there anything that we can do to have ice skating?
Can we set up something down in, down by the garden?
We have a lot of people asking again.
Still have the.
One thing they're asking too, is there any way to move it back up here? They liked it back up here, they didn't like sending their kids down at the end of the street, I can understand, but.
That's what we're, yeah.
You know, but we used to have it right down in the lot. Right where the light was.
A lot of two-by-sixes got busted when they drove on and stuff, but.
Still have the lighter?
There's some plastic on top.
That'd be great.
Closer to the water source.
A lot of people are asking.
Closer to the water source and light?
Yeah.
You ready?
Thank you. Uh, thank the letter from Northern Housing for their donation. Correspondent from New York State Office of Parks and Recreation regarding the grant application. Invitation to Holiday Decorating Contest Winners. Thank the letters for tree lighting ceremony. Correspondent from New York Burnier from Code Officers Tetro regarding his property at ninety-three Oak Street.
Any discussion on the correspondence?
Did you want to thank the donors verbally, so that people?
I thought they did, too.
No? Did we do all of them? I don't think you did.
Oh, I think we did Valero's, Dr. Groan's.
For the tree, we said all of them? Oh, I know it's in the minutes, but I mean, for people who just watch the thing, it's just nice to give it.
I think it was in my report, wasn't it?
Okay, I didn't remember you saying it out loud, I remember. Okay, that's all, I guess it's always nice just to give an extra call out to the folks.
Anything else on the correspondence?
Sorry, no.
Full business, TSA meter, nothing here. The town is still investigating, uh, the West Service Road Water District. Awaiting a response from their engineering firm about that. On a new business, uh, need a motion to approve the resolution for going place two thousand twelve elections?
Can I read it?
You read it first, after the motion.
I want to read it first.
Okay.
Resolution following place in time two thousand twelve election Village Champlain. Whereas the next village election for officers of Village Champlain, New York will be held in March twentieth two thousand twelve. Whereas the Board of Trustees of said village must designate a resolution, the polling place and hours which the polls shall be opened for section fifteen dash one oh four dash three B of the State of New York Election Law. Then be it therefore resolved that the village, village, that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined that the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain Office eleven oh four Route nine, Champlain, New York, with the polls being opened from twelve noon to nine P M. And be it further resolved that as required by section fifteen dash one oh four dash three B of the State Election Law, notice the said village polls placed in time, the polls will be open beginning at least sixty days prior to said election date. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The forthcoming question was duly put to roll call vote, which results as follows.
You motion to approve this resolution?
Certainly.
Second? We have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Tronblay.
Aye.
Trustee Gisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Tronblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye. There are two trustee seats up for election. Uh, the petitions may be picked up tonight, tomorrow, and February fourteenth is the date, uh, finally to return petitions to be put on the ballot. If you are interested, the petitions are available. Second item of new business is a sewer credit. Sewer credit request from Paul Monstad, manager of Champlain Mobile Home Park. I guess he's, I thought I prepared it. As this letter indicates, the water did not go into the sewer per Superintendent Sorrell. If we're decides to approve this one-time sewer credit, the amount credited listed below. If you would take a moment to read the letter that we received from Mr. Monstad. On this. I think the attempt was made to fix the leak, it was just a circumstantial that led to such a huge issue here.
Do you want a motion to have a discussion on further?
Yep. Have a motion to discuss this, please.
Absolutely.
Second? Okay, any discussion here?
Yeah, Larry, you were there, I take it?
Yeah, um, he, I called him, let him know it was leaking. He got everything ready, did a U F P O and stuff, he got his tractor up here and he got a call that his mother got in a bad accident, so.
So it was clearly the round.
Yeah, so the water didn't go into the sewer. It was a house killer, so it was outside.
They also called a construction for near, Hemingway Construction.
Yes.
Took longer than anticipated for them to, uh, show up.
We never did, you know?
Never did.
No, no isolation valves on that line at all.
What's that?
There's no isolation valve on that line from hydrant to residents, there's no shut-off.
Yeah, there's a shut-off, but there was a family in the trailer. And but the water, he's paying for the water, he's not, the water didn't go down the sewer, so he wants sewer credit. He, the water's getting paid for already, he uses a hundred thousand gallons, but they didn't go down the sewer.
They still had service available at home.
Correct, yes.
Hence the deduction of the normal. I bet they haven't got an ice skating rink up there now, though.
No.
Mr. Forrest Desire here.
I guess we need to sub a motion to detail approving the credit, right?
Yes.
Then I would make a motion to approve this one-time credit, sewer credit. Um, the amount of three hundred and ninety-six dollars since the water was definitely lost on the ground and not put up the sewer, didn't trade up.
Have a second? Any other discussion on this?
We're not very good at staying with our not offering credits.
Well, it's.
I don't think we've done it yet once.
If it would've been a leak and went inside the house and went down the bathroom, it's different, but it was outside between the meter and the trailer.
No, I definitely think we should give it, I just, I chuckle at.
Well, no, in defense of that, we have been very good about scrutinizing whether that water was actually lost in the sewer, not before approving.
Yes, we determined that if it went down the sewer, well, then it went down the sewer.
We have not given credits for leaky toilets, actually, in the last year or so.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Tronblay.
Aye.
Trustee Gisenda.
Aye.
Trustee Tronblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Any other new business come before the board? Can we recover a bit?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Uh, before we adjourn, please, I'd like to set up a date while we're all together.
No, don't say that word.
We are in the, uh, we are in the money deciding, uh, time of year. I would like to schedule at least one meeting tonight so that we can, uh, we can come up with some direction that we, the board, would like the village to take in the next budget year. Sorry, I can't say where to get through. Okay, uh, we need to start looking at our budget. So far, we've, uh, this year's budget is, is pretty on schedule. Hopefully, I'd like to see the next budget go as well. So can we set a minute, our meeting, date?
Mondays are best for me.
Mondays.
Mondays.
Mondays, Mondays are fine, I don't have the calendar.
I have mine, too.
Uh, we have the, we have the sixteenth, we have, uh, let's go a couple weeks.
Uh, two weeks, twenty-third.
Twenty-third, Monday the twenty-third, is that right? Good?
Sounds about.
Time? Six thirty, six?
Six is fine.
Okay. Twenty-three, January six P M. Okay, I'd like some ideas on where you wanna see the, the direction of the village for the next year, where we wanna put our finances.
Larry, could you have an idea for us to wish list of things that are coming up?
Uh, he's already been asked. Already been asked to develop them. Okay?
Now may I make a motion to adjourn?
You may make a motion to adjourn.
It's all done.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, folks.
Thank you. I think so, we can't allow them to use. Thank you.